So we're gonna start with the public hearing for the first one is the additional conditional rezones, so DTE has submitted some extra conditions on themselves and we're going to hear what they have to say. Let me get to that. You guys all find your... Okay, so we'll call it to order and the time is 7:35. We'll start this one. And do I hear an approval of this agenda? Do you hear a motion to approve this agenda? Changes. Approves first, court second. Okay, and the summary of this petition is that these were amendments that were initiated by DTE and this is the second hearing on the DT amendment proposal, which is the same proposal that we had in January of 14th, 2025, except for that there's modifications to their conditions and they desire to attach to the proposed overlay district. And the DTE proposals, I have them listed out on the agenda. I don't want to go through them because they're here to speak to us about what, you know, their side of the story, what they want to change or add as conditions. So I'm gonna hand the floor over to you guys so that you guys can give your presentation.
Thank you. You've got the slide up. Jay, why don't we go to the next slide already? We just zip right past the cover slide. We'll start with introductions tonight because we've got a little broader team than we had with us in January when we had the first public hearing. I am Emily Flachius. I work with DT on permitting their renewable projects and have for about the last 10 years. With me tonight is Michael Ribbit. You all heard him speak just a few minutes ago. He is a DTE director for Renewable Energy Development, very knowledgeable about the business side of renewables. Also with me tonight is Teresa Hannah. She's the site manager. Most of you are very familiar with her. She's been attending all these meetings with me for the last two years. And then also we have Ellie Simon. She's the DT project manager that has been managing this project and will continue to manage the project if it moves into construction. So here to be able to answer questions that are posed through the public hearing, we'll answer them through the chair at her direction plus we're, you know, of course, open to answering questions from the planning commission directly. I'm gonna at this point turn it over to Michael Ribbit because he's gonna do a bit of a high-level overview of DT's process for planning for these types of projects. We've heard at other public hearings, questions coming up about why is DT doing this? Why? Why are they moving in this direction? We wanted to take an opportunity to provide some information about that to contextualize the rezoning requests that we're making of Iosco Township. So I'm gonna step aside and let Michael present the next slide.
All right, thank you, Emily. All right, I've heard a couple times, why solar? And solar doesn't generate all the time. Why it's not going to help us? One of the things that we look at as a company, as a utility, is we filed an integrated resource plan. And so the integrated resource plan is looking at our demands on the grid over a course of 20 years. We plan for five years at a time. We'll model for 20 more, but really five years is what you're planning for. And part of that is looking at, okay, what's coming offline, what's coming online, what new load forecasts are coming on? And it's all about balancing the assets to match the load the best. And it's really about trying to drive reliability and cost effectiveness. And right now, we have a lot of aging assets that are generating for the DT grid. And so you think about, the majority of the assets we have are coal and those coal plants were pre-1970 builds. You think about anything you have that's 1970 or older, that's an asset that's needed to be relied on on a daily basis. It's tough, it's expensive, parts aren't in strong supply. So that's part of the reason we're really looking at these new solar, wind, and storage specifically. The other thing is, tell me online quick. So how do you get an asset online? You go through the MISO interconnection, which is the system operator, and that's a long process. It takes about five years right now to get through. And so the projects you're looking at that are coming online throughout the state, those have been in the works for about five years, if not longer. So this IRP takes into consideration a couple things. One, we all know about the Public Act 235. That's the Renewable Portfolio Statement, the Clean Energy Legislation that was passed in Michigan. That's one aspect of it. And so there is a legislation in Michigan that's driving for renewable energy and 9 watt hours electrons to be from renewable resources. The other thing is, like I said, forecast load growth, forecast retirements. The old assets we have are retired. And you can see on the chart, the dips that go below the line, the gray ones that go down, those are power plants that are coming offline. Those have been planned for quite some time. They've been aging, they have been approved by, they've been approved to come offline and really aren't feasible to keep online anymore.
Do they supply this area?
They do. They supply the grid. So it's tough to drag those to track.
Reinvest in them.
Let him finish. I will allow people, if they're amicable, to, if it's, to do some question and answer, but if it gets out of hand...
I'm sorry, ma'am, I thought that she was...
No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just explaining. I don't want anyone to feel like I'm shutting them down or anything, but I would like to hear what they have to say. I would like you guys to be able to ask questions. There is a call to the public, but if we can keep it very civil and polite and like, I don't mind there being a conversation. So I'm just putting that out there, okay? All right, go ahead.
The integrated resource plan is a contested case through the state of Michigan. So there are folks that will intervene in the case. There are public comments that can come out that I believe we hold four or five public workshops throughout the process to bring public comment in. So those questions that have come up on, you know, what's it take to reinvest? Those are all modeled. So that is taken into consideration and is updated on a periodic basis as we go forward. So that's really, when I hear why solar, this is really part of it. It's not meant to solve everything. It's meant to be a piece of the generation mix and it really helps if you think about it, the worst day in Michigan for load is the hottest, muggiest, sunniest August day. Everyone comes home and turns on their AC and you have to have capacity and you have to have generation available for it. Solar works really well in that case because it is operating at that point. Everyone wants to turn AC on and all of us residential customers are really the ones that really peak demand because we all have the ability to go from no load at your house to a lot of load at your house with just a click of a switch or now tap on your iHome if you have a Nest thermostat or something like that. That's what we're trying to solve for is when we cut the peak down, that really helps, that really helps keep the assets to a minimum for when you need to support the grid. Next slide, please. All right, so just going a little more detail on this. So as I mentioned, the coal plants that have been retired were pre-1970s. The ones that we're looking at now are around that same timeframe. They are old units. We would love to invest in them if feasible, but right now with legislation, with the supply chain, we're dealing with coal right in the US, it really is not feasible. We've been running those at a level that's cost-effective, but it's going to require new assets to come online. And that's where you've seen in 2021, we brought online an 1,100-megawatt natural gas plant. It's called Blue Water Energy Center. Great base load. Anyone that needs 24/7 reliable energy, that's one of the things. So you can build up from the bottom, that's when your base load is always on, can branch if you need it. We still have a nuclear power plant in Newport, Michigan, base load generation as well. These are now adding to it. These are really solving for the peaks and the spikes and things like that. So that's where you'll see wind, solar, and storage. And like I said, they're the assets that are actually feasible to bring online in the next five years. Big thing here, just to touch on again, the IRP, when we go through the integrated resource plan, we are solving for, you know, two things in general, reliability and we're solving for cost effectiveness. And so that's what's driving this. It goes through a contested case, it gets approved by the Michigan Public Service Commission, and that's what really sets out our goals. So the team here that's in front of you is not going out here because we 100% have to have solar, that's the thing we need. It's literally what is approved by the state for us to go out and build as a utility and for us to keep the lights on. This is what we have to do. So the team here has got a tall task to come out and respond to where solar is feasible and works for the community and I know it will make everyone happy. That's most decisions in life, there's going to be someone that's not happy with it and someone who is happy with it. But what we're doing is we're here, we're in front of local communities, local siting is taking place here where they are working the deal that works best for the community, that has setbacks that work for the community, has economics that work for the community, and I appreciate that. One last thing I'll touch on here, DT Electric Company, the utility, is the one that is actually contracting with residents. So when we talk about landowners and is it good for land? Not good for land. The easements, the lease agreements, purchase options, that's all coming directly from our utility. There is no LLC, there is no cutout, is directly with our bankable utility company. And so when you talk about a partner who's going to come in and actually stand behind our word, that's us. We're going to be there for the long run and we're putting a rate on our company and DT Electric when it comes to any kind of real estate transactions. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
One thing I wanted to ask is, can you give any kind of comparison? I just, I feel like, why solar? Like the economics of it? Like when you're saying like it's just too expensive, like how maybe that affects our electric bill? Because I know that people, you know, people are always like, my bills are still gonna go up. And then the other question, I got another question, is can you explain a little bit? I know people often are like, well, electricity isn't benefiting us. Maybe explain that. I mean, and maybe I'm wrong, but I understand that electricity could be generated in California and I could be getting it, using it here. Maybe just how?
Sure.
Just a quick runaround of the grid?
Yeah, I'll start with the first one. So why solar? How's it affect the bill? So as we go through the modeling and you'll see, you know, press releases of, I'm sure folks have heard Matt Paul, the president of Electric Company, on an advertisement recently saying, save customers money. And I know everyone's looking at it going, well, my bill didn't go down. Or, you know, I still feel it in my bill. When we talk about savings, when we look at, you know, cost-effective generation, you're modeling it out and you're going, what is it versus the alternative? It's not necessarily today's bill versus tomorrow's bill. It's about today's bill versus what tomorrow's bill could be if you went this way, this way, this way, or this way. And what we're modeling with the integrated resource plan is, right now, solar is the most cost-effective way to go for on this scale. And so when we're looking at building solar out, we're looking for utility scale sizes and that's why you won't see DT getting into a lot of small-scale solar. There are a couple instances where we have customers that specifically ask for something, typically land they own for a project they're really vested in, that's gonna be more expensive. And we tell them, that's one of the hardest conversations we have with someone is, yeah, we'd love to build it, but this is what you're looking at, it's more expensive. Scale matters in solar. So does that address the first one to you?
Yeah.
And then the second question again was around just location of generation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How electricity, you know, where it's generated doesn't necessarily mean that it's used there?
Right.
Like that it travels through the grid all over the country except Texas.
Right, so Michigan, Michigan, as we all know, I love living in Michigan because it's peninsula. Everyone asks, where do you live? I'm like, all right, here. We're a peninsula, so our transmission and the electric grid is a peninsula. And so we have a capacity import limitation where we can import 10%. And so yes, some electricity that's coming in Michigan and what you're relying on can be 10% from out of state. So 90% has to be in Michigan. Now, when you're talking about location, our projects, majority of our projects will interconnect into the transmission line. And so when you're talking, you know, very high voltage lines, they're meant to run long distance with low electricity electron drops. So you likely will consume it here. We don't follow every electron on the grid. It really works similar to like a closed water system where when there's a hole somewhere, that's going to start pulling electrons. But you can't guarantee that something produced here is going to be consumed here, but you can say by theory, most of it's going to be consumed here. Now, you can't go from California to here, that's, if we're importing, we're likely importing from either Canada through transmission lines or through Ohio or Indiana.
I'll just add, because I know people ask me this all the time, and one thing that I always say is it kind of flows like water, right? So what's needed here stays here, but no different than you don't, we don't, this township doesn't produce any energy right now. So you're getting it from somewhere, so you're pulling it from somewhere, whether that's Detroit or St. Clair Shores from a gas plant. It's, when you turn your lights on, it's coming from somewhere. So if you're producing it here, it will stay here, but then it will continue to flow where it's needed. Because this township's been using electricity for years and years and years and hasn't produced anything. So we're, there's probably been a lot of needing over the life of the world where they're sitting there and they're saying, we don't want a coal plant, but that coal plant has been providing energy in this township, no different than this might provide some neighboring townships some energy if a project gets developed.
So just to clarify, 90% of the electricity we consume in Michigan is produced in Michigan? Is that, did I hear you correctly?
Theoretically, the import limitations, you cannot rely on more import than 10%. Electrons are gonna flow how electrons flow, but yes, that's generally where it's at. It could be closer to 100%, but we are only allowing import.
Go ahead, Jerry. Okay, so your good neighbor policy, where you compensate people within 300 feet of the solar field, is that paid by DTE or is that a third party?
Everything on this solar project is funded through DT.
DT, okay.
I have a question. Why farmland?
Cost effectiveness. Cost effectiveness and landowners that are interested in signing by land into the program.
Why not along your lines, under your mines? Why not along freeways? Why not over parking lots? I just think there's a lot of other choices.
There are. And trust me, we've evaluated. It's cost effectiveness. Right now, steel, cable length, things like that is driving this. So if you're looking at parking structures, we looked at a lot of, you know, parking structures, look at a large, maybe a distribution center, think an Amazon distribution center, they might be able to get on the rooftop, five megawatts. And those are huge buildings. You're talking three or more flats, 1,000 square feet. On their parking lot, you can probably get maybe another one megawatt or two megawatts. So the scale of that, plus you're having twice as long piles because you have to put it, you put the parking structure in and then solar on top and then you're having twice as long cables down, it could be three, four times the cost of what we're looking at for utility scale.
Can you also comment about the availability of transition, of transmission point of interconnection?
Yeah, once you get up to the, say, 10, 20-megawatt or greater range, you really need transmission lines. The distribution and solve transmission lines, which is what you normally see in your neighborhoods, those cannot handle the amount of generation you'll have at a large site that's 20 or larger megawatts.
There's also just the point of interconnections in the urban areas. Those points, those transmission lines are fully loaded already with the power that is being consumed and distributed in those regions and where what we have out in the more rural areas are transmission lines that have available capacity where additional electricity can be taken up onto the grid for distribution into other parts of the state. So there's literally a bit of a traffic jam that exists in the transmission system in the more urban areas because they're fully built out with commercial and residential and industrial. And to Michael's point, the areas along freeway, freeway right of ways, it's not enough to make the dent that needs to be made in order to provide the level of generation that the plans predict are going to be needed as the utilities try to keep the lights on, as our communities grow, people establish new businesses, people buy, you know, build new homes, you know, the economy keeps expanding and the electrical grid needs to keep up with that.
Did one of you gentlemen want to say something back there? I heard you say somebody.
I was just wondering, are we able to have a dialogue?
I'm gonna say, I heard you say something, so yeah, I'd like to hear what you have. You can ask him a question.
Okay. I was just asking you as far as the chairman, do we have a dialogue now?
I'm allowing it, yes. I'm giving you permission to ask him a question.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. So what about the noise pollution factor as far as the, how large the grid is and the noise pollution factor and the pollution that comes from the solar panels itself? Because my solar panel that I bought cost me $70,000 and it's only helped me $50, $30 a month, which they lied to me. Obviously, that company is out of business now. So the renewal, I was lied to. I spent 70 grand on it. And I'm wondering as far as, as far as the noise factor, noise pollution, and the pollution that comes from the actual panels themselves, if one gets bruised, destroyed, or somebody shoots it, God forbid.
Yeah, I apologize, you were lied to from the company. I worked on a lot of cases with...
Well, broad business, not for a reason, but go ahead.
Right, and that's, and that's one of the things that we're driving here is cost effectiveness needs scale. And the small scale on the rooftop is not cost effective. In terms of noise pollution, that's, the team here has worked hand-in-hand to try to understand like, what does a community need from a noise standpoint? And there's an ordinance in place, that's much more restrictive than state siting, which is a good thing. And so we do measure noise pollution and we'll measure to the, you know, non-participant and participating landowner's homes. Frankly, Teresa's been instrumental on another project where we 100%, 120% met the ordinance and Teresa's still working with the landowner that's saying, hey, I hear this in my front lawn, I don't want to hear it. And we said, great, let's figure it out. And so we're going through and working a solution and we'll put something in place to help them as much as we can, above and beyond what was required by the ordinance. So that's where I hope folks feel, I don't need you to walk away wanting it, that I don't realize, I realize that's not going to help the case, but what I want you to know is the team here is going to work with you to get you what we can do for you and make it work. And that's a piece that you're not gonna see with everyone. We'll go above and beyond the duty count.
All right, aside from the noise pollution, I also ask about the actual pollution from the energy that it produces itself or if it got damaged? Do you have any information about that?
Yeah, happy to speak to that. So the modules we plan to use on this, they're polysilicon. They're, I don't know, 90, 95% silica, which is sand. It's glass and sand. So it's, we don't, we don't have any concerns with environmental contamination or anything like that with these models. There were models in the past that were used, not by DT, that had issues with cadmium and hard metals, heavy metals, but the ones we're using going forward are sand and glass.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll get to you and then I'll get to you, but she had her hand up. She was like, oh, she was next.
I had a couple of points I wanted to hit. The first one is if you could please go into detail about the lease payments that farmers and participating landowners get, some of the average increase in tax revenue that have been created in the communities that you've worked in. And then also, I think Joe raises some really good points over here. If you could go into some more detail about your good neighbor policies, the type of payouts you do during construction, the type of money that people get who live by it but might not necessarily be participating, I think maybe talking a little bit more money and more good neighbor policy is gonna alleviate some of those feelings.
I'll ask you, Teresa, I'll speak to the first one. In terms of our lease payments, we have confidential contracts with our customers, with the landowners. Their standard lease payments that if you look across the industry, they're all within 10 or 15% of each other on a, it's a dollar per acre per year within the fence and then a dollar per acre per year outside of the fence. So if your land is being used to host modules, most of our landowners are going to be plus or minus 5 or 10% of each other. When it comes to participation agreements, Teresa, do you...
Yeah, I'll just, and I know some of, this had come up and I think part of the reason you asked the question is there have been some comments about a company called First Land that was signing for, or putting out notices for First, so I'm gonna address that also, but for participation agreements. First of all, whether it's, whatever company it is that meets with landowners, the agreements that are signed are with DTE. They are not with a third-party company that DTE is contracted with to use to work through those agreements. In terms of participation agreements, there is a, DTE offers participation agreements in the community for those that are not hosting infrastructure on their property. So if they live in, if they have a view shed of the project, then they are eligible to receive a certain dollar amount every year for the life of the project. And that is just because DT wants to be a good neighbor in the community. There's no other reason that we do this, but we recognize that the one thing that does, that does change when we work on a solar project is the view shed. And so for that reason, we have found that that seems to be welcomed in the communities.
And it typically gives that non-participating landowner the option to use that money towards covering the view shed if they want to do something on their property or if they feel like having the money for some other needs.
Do you offer, you know, do you guys usually do tree lining?
Oh, we do a lot of tree lining.
Okay.
Not participating parcels, that's where the participation agreement comes in, but in terms of the ordinance and in terms of covering the view shed from something that goes into the plan. And I'll speak to one thing I hope gives you some comfort here is we are regulating utilities. At the end of the day, every one of our contracts, every dollar we spend can be audited and likely will be audited by the Michigan Public Service Commission and a third party that sees our books. So there's, there is nothing we do that we hold under the table on any, every payment, every contract we have in Michigan Public Service Commission can and likely will look at it and ensure that everything we're doing is on books.
Is that available to the public?
It's not typically available to the public due to confidentiality of, to this case's purposes.
Bailey, could you go, could we go, could you go to the NPS and ask if there are...
You could likely request them to look at something, for sure.
You could, probably, yeah.
I think also maybe going into decommissioning, that was my next, sorry.
Do you copy that?
Yeah, I think we'll get to that. And I think other people would like to...
Sorry, my bad.
You, yeah. Not you, no, no, no.
I was just wondering.
I don't know your name.
I'm not, oh, sorry.
Just wondering. Go ahead in the back. I can't remember your name. I know you want to say something.
Yeah, Laurie. So you said it's 90% silica and glass for the panels and that, so that leaves 10% that you're not addressing? And you did say you're not very concerned about that, but as someone who lives within the 300 feet, like it's a concern to me. So I'd like you to speak towards that other 10% and then how that will impact if they're damaged to the panels or tornadoes and all the things that happen, but you do have your control.
We all have wells here.
Sure. Can we, do you want to speak to an expert we brought in?
So DT, well...
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not a textbook expert when it comes to solar modules. So when I say I'm not concerned, what I've heard from our experts that have deep delve into this, because we live and work and play here as well, we've got plenty of DTE employees that live in this area.
Okay.
So I can't speak to within the 300 feet.
No, no, not within the 300 feet, but within townships and Livingston County.
Right.
So you don't, you can't tell me what the other 10% is or you don't?
Off the mat, I cannot tell you what the other 10% is.
There's something here that does. Yeah, there's some other things in there, like the wiring, so that wiring contains copper or aluminum, you know, the frame of the panel is typically aluminum. So it's metals that are in, you know, everyday use, electronics, equipment, the same metals that are used in those things that typically makes up the rest of the panel. So with the, with the solar panels, if they are retired or if they're damaged and need to be replaced, DT does participate in a recycling program for those panels and they're trying to get as much of that through that program as possible. As, as the industry grows and the supply becomes more available, we expect there to be more processors available to meet the demand because the copper wire that Ellie described that's in the panels and the aluminum framing of the panels has value and can be reused and repurposed. And so that is a part of DT's program.
Do you have a spec sheet for the panels that you're suggesting that we could be available?
Yes, we can provide that. And I guess one of the things that, one of the things I just kind of like to remind folks, because it's where I'm gonna go next to my presentation, is the whole purpose of this hearing and the requests that we've made at the township is just for us to know what land area we can begin to think about working out a plan for. And once we're able to know where we're planning, then we can come forward with more of the details because what will follow this process is a special use permitting process, which itself will also involve a public hearing. And that's exactly the process where all the studies that Ann mentioned are submitted by any developer, whether it's a utility or an independent power producer. Those studies get presented at the time you make application for your special land use permit. This is a rezoning that is necessary to even make the land use available on these parcels. Because right now, the way the township's ordinance works is there's agricultural residential district, solar is not allowed in it as a use by right or a special land use, but if a solar overlay district is put in place, then solar becomes a special land use in the district that is subject to an additional permitting process on top of this one. And we are commonly providing spec sheets on the inverters and on the panels and on the racking systems as part of those applications. That's where we'll address decommissioning because we'll know exactly what we're working with in terms of what would be required to decommission the projects. Decommissioning is a standard requirement here in Michigan, it's a standard requirement for Iosco Township, it's absolutely something that's gonna have to be provided for if we're able to get to the special land use permitting phase. But tonight, what's before us is the decision about location. And can DT begin to plan a project in the locations that we've made the request on? So it's really about triggering a planning process, not about any decisions being made by the planning commissioner or the township board right now that is approving an actual project. We've got a long road ahead of us.
Well, I think like just the basic fund of that is how does that impact the people have any decision on something if they don't know what's probably in the community in terms of how it's going to affect our town.
If you're listening to this, you're listening to a legal therapist who's poisonous. Have you got this?
I just, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts. I'm going to let them continue with their presentation just so we're not here all night because we have more. We have another public hearing after this one.
Can I ask you one question, Ann? Just one question. I'm sorry.
I like, everyone, there is going to be a call in public. So I'm being generous, so I am going to let them finish their presentation so we can get through it, write your questions down, and you can ask them at the call to public of this hearing. Go ahead.
All right. DJ, if you can go to the next slide. And what I wanted to do, just for the benefit of making sure that we're all knowing that we're talking about the same things, is just do a little bit of an overview about this conditional rezoning process that we're following here. And conditional rezoning requests are something that are permitted by state law underneath the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. That statute allows an applicant who's seeking a zoning change to include voluntary written conditions relating to the future use and development of the land that is the subject of the application. So that's what DT has done here. Is we've made a rezoning application, but we've also included with that application voluntary written conditions that have frankly evolved as we've been going through this process since January because we've been keeping our ears open and trying to listen to what we're hearing from the community. With conditional rezonings, township's not permitted to require us to offer conditions, and the township's not permitted to alter or add to the conditions while the conditional rezoning is in effect. So it is voluntary conditions on the part of the applicant that the township makes decisions in about whether they're going to accept, you know, accept or reject as a whole. One of the things that's really unique about conditional rezonings is that the township can establish a time period in which the conditions will apply. And if the conditions to the rezoning are not satisfied within that time period, the land automatically reverts back to the former zoning. So we've included a proposed timeframe here that I'll get into in a couple of minutes that relates to how long the solar overlay can be in place and what would happen if we don't begin construction within that timeframe. And that makes the conditional rezoning very different from a traditional rezoning. When you rezone land for residential or commercial, that zoning runs with the land. And it doesn't go away just because the landowner doesn't take advantage of it. But what we are proposing is to time limit ourselves to the availability of this overlay district such that if the project is somehow delayed, the risk is on DTE. It's not on the township. All right. So DJ, if you could hit the next slide. We're going to talk about the specific overlay request. And Theresa, did you have a chance to hand out some of the maps that we got? So I think floating around with the calling, you should have a two-sided piece of paper that includes the maps of where we're proposing these solar overlay districts. And we talked about them in terms of a west area and a south area. And I'm going to start with the west area because that was in fact the first application that we brought to the township because we were under the mistaken understanding that the township had already put in place a solar overlay district in the area that we refer to as the south area. So we had started with the west area. It is in land that is within sections 22 and 27. The total acreage within the boundaries of the commercial, the solar overlay district is 850 acres. But what's really important is that 850 acres includes 301 acres of what we've designated as a solar exclusion area. And I'll explain that in just a minute. The buildable area that's left in this west overlay district is 227 acres because that buildable area takes out environmental features that we already identified as constraints to the location of solar panels. Those are things like established woodlots, wooded wetlands, drains, and things like that where we can't put solar panels in those places. So those areas were subtracted out of the land area that is within the solar overlay district, leaving us with 227 acres. Now, when you look at this map, you see land that is hatched yellow. And there are some dimensions that we've provided over that land that is hatched yellow. So a yellow hatched land is a solar exclusion area. There will be, if the township accepts our conditions, there will be no solar panels or inverters on any of that land that's hatched in yellow. And so if you look around the perimeter, you can see there are magenta dots that represent, best as we can tell, where residents are located. And then we've also tried to provide distances, the depth of those solar exclusion areas. And you can see that it varies across the solar overlay district. We very much were attempting to try to limit view shed impacts and to keep, and to provide a guarantee to the township that panels would be no closer than the edges of those solar exclusion areas. The other condition that we've provided with the west area is that the equipment sound levels will not exceed 45 dBA LEQ, one hour, it's a measurement technique, at any point along the security fence that encloses the solar array. And so sound levels in the solar exclusion area are expected to be even lower because that 45 dBA will be at the security fence, which is typically roughly about 20 feet off of the edge of the solar array. It has been DT's practice to try to put inverters in the center of its projects because that really helps to minimize those sound levels and makes it so that we can achieve 45 dBA at the security fence. I've permitted a number of these projects, and our sound modeling shows sound levels substantially below 45 dBA outside of the security fence and at the property lines with non-participants. So that is the conditions, two of the conditions that relate to the west area. We have a second map that blows that up a bit more to make the reading of it easier. And you can see the parcels that are incorporated. Now, going to the south area. The south area is roughly what the township zoning ordinance had indicated would be the area of a solar overlay district. The total acreage within our proposed solar overlay boundary is 918 acres. It has 144 acres of solar exclusion area. Again, that's that area shown in yellow hatch. And the buildable area is 493 acres. So between the two overlay areas, we are proposing 720 acres that is approved of solar panels. It will not be 1,800 acres of solar panels. It is 720 acres of solar panels. One of the big challenges with the south overlay area is there's actually a fair number of siting constraints in that area because of the drainage that was put in place with respect to the, Theresa, the perma-farms properties. It is actually very challenging to site panels in this area, which is why we also have some, why we have some solar exclusion areas around our south proposed district that are 50 feet, which is a number that depends on the township moving forward with the adoption of its CREO setbacks, which I understand is going to be subject of separate public hearing tonight. So again, land hatched in yellow is a solar exclusion area. We have disclosed with the magenta hatching, that would be the substation location. It too would not have solar panels on it. It would be limited to substation equipment. Because of the nature of the south overlay area, there we are proposing a sound level not exceed 45 dBA at any point along the overlay boundary. And again, it's just, it goes to the compactness of that area and our belief that the security fences are going to be closer to the district boundaries. Just to be really clear, those yellow areas where we will not have solar panels, we will not have inverters, they can include landscape screening in that area. We can have, we would be able to have access roads in that area. We'd be able to have drainage and underground utilities. But there would be no on-the-ground equipment in those yellow hatched areas. So a couple more conditions that are common to both requests. And this is what should be up on the screen now. So we have proposed that the conditional rezoning remain in effect for three years from the date it takes effect. And that it would lapse, it would automatically revert to ag residential if DT hasn't started access road construction within that three-year period. If DT begins their access road construction, then our rights with that zoning would vest, is kind of the legal term. And we would be bound by the conditions that we proposed to the township for the duration of the project. So the sound levels don't go away after three years. The solar exclusion areas don't go away after three years. What happens after three years is either the zoning fully goes into effect because DT's got under construction or it goes fully away because DT did not get in, under construction. The next condition that DT has offered is to meet with each non-participating landowner who shares a property line with one of the participating parcels to evaluate view shed impacts and to discuss landscape screening options to mitigate impacts where existing vegetation might be perceived as being insufficient. Trust me on this one. Nobody has the same set of values and point of view about view shed across these projects. I just had a landowner in Isabella County contact us saying, "We just saw where you skated some trees and we don't want them there. Don't put them." We had proposed to put a landscape screen around their rear inside property lines to help mitigate views to the solar panels, and they're like, "No, we don't want it there. Move it back towards your security fence. We want our, you know, the edge of our property to remain the same." And we did.
Apparently that wasn't on their property, though.
No, it wasn't on their property. It was on the land that DT, but the county had required us to site the landscaping along their property line to maximize their screening. And it turned out that's not what that landowner thought was the most appropriate approach to screening. So we're modifying. But what we've found through these projects is that we do the best job of providing landscape screening when we talk to the people that are most affected and then bring back those comments to the planning commission with a landscape plan that responds to the comments. And so what we are committing to through this condition is to offer to meet with all the non-participants. We can't do more than offer to meet. We can't force people to meet. But we will go and try to meet with everybody and have this conversation about landscape screening options and what people would like to see in order to give them a comfort level around their future view shed. Ultimately, the landscape screening will be decided by the planning commission because they're the ones who are, would be charged with approving a special land use permit. The next condition is that DT will not construct or operate a solar facility outside of an authorized solar overlay district in Iosco Township. We will only be operating within the boundaries that are set by the planning commission and the township board. The next one is that DT will submit a special land use permit application with a site plan within 12 months of the date of the overlay zoning taking effect. So we would have a planning period that would be no longer than 12 months, and then we would be back with a full application that includes all of the types of information that people in the room have been asking about tonight. Information specifications on panels and inverters, a detailed landscape plan, a sound modeling study, a decommissioning plan and a decommissioning estimate. We have offered to share with the planning commission examples of similar applications we filed in other communities to show the detail that's revealed in those plans. So the final condition is a bit of a wordy one. And what it is, is that it is a commitment that if, for some reason, the planning commission or the township board would move to modify or revoke DT's special use permit for some good reason, for some cause, that DTE, and if that modification or revocation was upheld by a final non-appiable order of a court, DT will comply with that final non-appiable order. And in the case of a revocation, the overlay district would automatically terminate, and the project will be decommissioned in accordance with the terms of the decommissioning agreement that would be entered into between DT and the township. This provision is an important one because as part of the legislation that was passed in 2023, the state passed a rule that says if you have a special use permit that's granted after January 1st, 2020, and the township tries to modify it or revoke it, it becomes a non-conforming use. And there's sort of this insulation of consequences that might come from an adverse township action. And what we've said through this condition is that we will abide by the township's decision-making. If they have a concern that we're not living up to our obligations and they feel the need to modify or revoke the permit, we are not going to claim that we are non-conforming use and can just continue on. That we will abide by final judicial review of that decision and act accordingly. And so we are providing a benefit and assurance to the township that goes beyond what exists currently under state law. So if we can turn to, I guess, should I pause there? Is there any questions from the planning commission on those conditions?
You guys have any questions?
I know it's been a little confusing in the past, but I also feel like we've now gone through this enough times that hopefully we're getting the right amount of understanding clarity.
I have a little question on this last one we were just describing.
Yeah.
Can you walk through that?
Yes. Yes, because there's a lot packed in there. So what it contemplates is that maybe someday in the future, the planning commission or the board of trustees, whoever's responsible for making the decision, makes a determination that DT hasn't been abiding by its permit requirements and that its permit needs to be modified, its permit needs to be revoked. Because, go ahead.
I'm sorry. This means you're already in construction or?
It would be more after the project is operational.
Okay.
So if the township was being, you know, awash in sound complaints and it seemed evident that DT was not complying and was not solving the problem, and the township felt they needed to take steps to make sure that its rules were followed. What we are saying is that we would follow you through that process. We would want due process and have, you know, judicial review of your decision to make sure that everybody, you know, everybody's treated, being treated fairly. But if the township modified or revoked the permit and a court agreed that, yes, the township should, you know, had every right to modify or revoke, we're going to comply with that order. And right now, under state law, we have an argument that we are a non-conforming use and that you can't take away our ability to continue to operate notwithstanding your attempts to modify or revoke the permit. It's an added protection to the township.
So if it was a state siting project that is an obligation, so it's state siting, you wouldn't have this protection?
You wouldn't have this protection in state siting. And in townships where projects are going through an ordinary special use process, instead of the conditional rezoning process, you don't necessarily get to be able to attach this kind of a condition. This is something that DT's volunteer to do and to forego the protections that were extended to the utilities and developers through Act 234, which was intended to block modifications and revocations of permits for renewable projects.
Anything else, Patty? Mike, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with the framing of the, I think there's a way to get there, but not in the way that you suggest. So I agree that the statute requires it to be considered a legal non-conforming use, but it also says that the township shall not revoke. And so that's a proclusive, so in any case, a circuit court judge looking at that could never then rule that the revocation was okay because it's precluded by the statute outline. Now, I think there's a way to get around that, which would be in terms of the conditions and maybe even a waiver of that. But you understand the point.
I understand that you are approaching it from a slightly different perspective than me, but I don't think there's that much daylight between what we're talking about.
No, I'm just looking at.
That right, there's not a lot of daylight. It's just how it's phrased.
Shall not be revoked or modified.
Understood. I'm just making the point that we're not that, there's not a lot of daylight between what you and I are talking about. It's more how it's being phrased.
Yeah, no.
And you think it should be phrased as a waiver rather than the affirmative statement that I made.
Yeah, I think you could waive that right as a condition. But.
We should probably stop here because we can't negotiate these terms?
No, I understand that. It hasn't been offered. That's all I'm saying.
In the word, "it hasn't been offered" in the way that you think it should be offered, right? right?
Well, I think that by saying that somehow that the township could revoke it is a misstatement of the law.
I don't agree.
Okay, well, it says shall not be revoked or modified.
Probably not...
I'm just...
...useful for us to continue this statement.
I'm happy to talk to you.
I would be happy to talk to you offline, too. I'd be happy to talk to you offline, too.
I just want to make sure the planning commission is clear on the language of the statute.
Understood. Understood. I am trying to explain what the condition we offered was and what the intent was behind that condition, which is to abide by the township's decisions.
All right, Mike, I got a question.
Yeah.
So, I mean, basically what I'm understanding, and I'm trying to clarify for everybody, too, is they're offering us more than if it was to go to, like, more rights to pull them back or say they're not doing things right than if it was to go to state siting. Yes, or no?
Yeah, so if the MPSC issued a siting certificate, it has the effect of preempting all of your zone, right? It wouldn't necessarily matter anymore because it would be preemptive. So in that way, that's correct, that they are looking at a conditional rezoning to change the boundaries of the overlay. That's the step we're at. And then Emily's correct, there would be the second special use permit where you get into all the details of the actual siting of that land use. So if the MPSC were to issue a siting certificate, it would have the effect of preempting all of your regulations as to that particular land use for that site.
And if they were blowing out 70 decibels and we kept documenting it, we would have less chances through MPSI-... ...siting to go after... Actually get that remedied, whereas would this give us more ability to get it remedied?
Yeah, well, I think there would be some remedial process. It's hard to determine what that would be, whether that would be through a complaint through the MPSC relative to the certificate. Could also be some other claim in, say, circuit court for either a public or private nuisance not abiding by that certificate. But I suspect that the MPSC is going to have some oversight in that.
I think there, to Mike's point, I think there is some haziness about what would happen post-state siting certificate and questions of enforcement. It would seem that the MPSC would be in the driver's seat on enforcement. It's their siting certificate, but we haven't gotten there yet, and I think there truly is some haziness within the guidelines even that the MPSC has issued today. They just really haven't addressed that question very specifically.
But, you know, assuming that every... all the modeling is correct, that DTE has talked about, right? They're well under the limit established by the MPSC, the 55 versus 45.
Yeah, and thank you actually for making that point. Our conditions include a sound level that is significantly below that which would be permitted under state siting, where the sound level is 55 dBA at the wall of a non-participating dwelling, and we're talking about 45 back at the security fence for the west area or, you know, at the boundary of the solar overlay district in the south area.
Do you guys have any other questions? Okay, I will take two questions from the audience, and I will take yours and then yours.
I'm not really... I'm not really clear on who controls the project, if it's locally approved application or state cited approved. Does DTE still control the project?
What do you mean by control?
Do you determine what building we're under each scenario?
Yeah, if DTE were proceeding through state siting, it would submit an application that looks a lot like a special use application with a site plan of the proposed facility.
So if you're showing me that you can meet your needs under this conditional zoning request, and you maintain control regardless of who approves your application, why don't you validate your good neighbor spirit and hold those conditions regardless of if it goes to state or not? If you can meet your needs under those conditions? Why... I perceive this as a threat. You approve what I'm offering, or we're going to the state. So if you go to the state and they approve, why not honor those conditions if your needs are met? I don't see the...
That's the good neighbor.
I mean, behind a threat is an unwillingness to do the alternative.
Stop. I don't want people doing that to anybody. I wouldn't want them doing that to you either.
I just...
I want her to answer his question.
So DTE's been committed to finding workable paths and putting a lot of time and energy. We've been attending meetings with this planning commission for more than two years, talking about this project. We've held public open houses, we've done canvassing, we've made presentations, we've brought subject manager experts. We've been at this a long time. We are the local permitting team. We are very committed to working with local planning commissions and township boards to try to gain some community acceptance around a project. It will be a different team that takes it through state siting, and those decisions will be made by that team based on their evaluation of facts and circumstances at that point in time. And I can't guarantee that that team, when they take a hard look at the compromises that this team was willing to make in order to get this approved locally, is going to reach the same conclusion.
A team from DTE... A second team from DTE?
Yes. So this will be an engineering question. The longer we go at this, the more costs change and the economics around it change, and it could very well be that DTE would make a decision that, you know, it didn't make a lot of economic sense to have that quarter-mile solar exclusion area, and that we're going to trim it back, and we're going to put additional panels in some portion of the project in order to make the economics of the project work.
I think this was a true culpriment, right? I do.
You done answered. Who was it? There was somebody in the... It was Sarah, yeah.
Thank you, Tammy. Emily stated that they need to rezone in order to know... to plan, to where this project can go. Again, economics, I assume. And I just might not be understanding, but both in three spots I see in this ordinance and in this upcoming public hearing, this trigger, require that action on an application for large SES requires the simultaneous submittal of a rezoning petition to large SES overlay district. Then page two, a large SES application is simultaneously approved. And then page seven, action on an application for large SES requires simultaneous submittal of a rezoning position to the large SES overlay and the submittal of a special use application. So why are they getting to rezone ahead of an application if the ordinance states over and over that it has to be done with the application?
I think you're looking at proposed language or unless you're looking at the existing ordinance, because I think I read it differently.
November 3rd, I don't know, I got off the township's website.
This question was brought up by our last meeting, and John Harris was here.
I was just gonna say.
Exactly. But now that we have Mike, we'd like to hear Mike's answer.
I'd like to hear what John said.
It seems like it's hard before horse. Why isn't the application coming in simultaneous to the zoning request? That's what their ordinance states. Over and over.
I don't agree that that's what it requires, and I believe John Harris has agreed with this approach and interpretation, and that we are on solid ground requesting the conditional rezoning first, followed up by making application with a special use permit and site plan. And in fact, it was at John's urging that we included the... John urging us to consider including the timeframe around which we would be submitting that application, and that is with the condition of within 12 months.
So the ordinance on the township's website is not accurate? Is that what you're stating?
I'm saying I don't read it the same way that you do, and...
I read simultaneous as at the same time. I'll say that.
The township attorney has agreed that we are proceeding in a procedurally sound manner.
Seems like the planning commission should really understand the simultaneous condition with the attorney before they decide tonight.
Mike, would you like to take the floor?
Yeah, so as I understand it, that language is or was proposed, but I'm not sure that it's changed yet. So that... I don't necessarily disagree with the proposed revision requiring... You get into this issue about rezoning property without the intended plan for it, and why would you do that? This one's a little different because it's submitted as a conditional rezoning, which means then if the condition is not met, you're not going to have this expanded overlay district laying out there for a while for anybody to do. It's not like, you know, a straight rezoning to a district that would allow that use without the condition being fulfilled, and that condition is submitting that special land use within 12 months. If it's not, then that expanded overlay district will go away.
Yeah, and that's a good point to have raised. Had DTE not applied as a conditional zoning, it's just straight as an overlay zoning, there would be no time limit. And to Mike's point, the zoning would go into place and then run with the land. And so we, by taking a different zoning path than just a straight rezoning, which is what's described in the zoning ordinance, we are imposing conditions that relate to the timing of our application and addressing a timely application following the rezon.
So for laymen and not lawyers, does this mean basically what you're saying is because it's a conditional rezone, that's why we can... This doesn't all have to be simultaneous?
Well, that, and as I understand, there's a public hearing portion for that modification, which means it necessarily has not taken it back.
The language in the existing ordinance is different.
Right, and so...
The trigger ordinance, which we're giving a public hearing on.
That's right. So, you know, again, the conditional rezoning is a little different posture than a straight rezoning in that if the condition is not met within the timeframe agreed to, then it would revert, and that expanded district would go away.
All right. I know that you all got a report from your planning consultant. The focus of his report was Section 17.3b 3 of your zoning ordinance that lays out a series of criteria that the planning commission is to consider in making zoning recommendations to the township board. Another maybe important point for the benefit of the public is that the planning commission is merely in a recommending position tonight. It's the township board that makes the ultimate decision. In between planning commission recommendation and township board action, the application will go to Livingston County, and its planning commission is going to review it and weigh in. So I just wanted to touch briefly on the criteria or considerations that the planning commission is supposed to take into account in making their recommendation, and just highlight a couple of the reasons that we would see our application as being favorable with respect to those criteria. The first one is changed conditions justifying the overlay district. And what we've suggested is, you know, the changed condition is the need to incorporate additional clean generation sources to supplement baseload generation to meet the needs of customers in DTE's service area, which includes parts of Iasco Township. And that was triggered by public Act 235 that Michael Ribbit mentioned and the state renewable energy portfolio standard. Also, distributed generation sources like solar facilities support the electric grid reliability, which is something that we've heard tonight that Iasco Township residents would benefit from. It allows for a source of electrical generation to enter the grid at a different point than other sources of generation, and that helps with grid reliability as well as for peak time generation. The next consideration is the impact on the provision of public services and facilities. That's often a consideration with rezoning, is like, how is this going to impact the township's costs for providing public services and facilities? And the good news is that solar energy facilities don't require connections to water or wastewater systems, so there is no public facilities impact. Solar energy facilities are secured, they're remotely monitored 24/7, therefore don't present a local policing burden. And then solar energy facilities are not uniquely susceptible to fire, and therefore don't pose a local fire protection burden. One of the things that DTE does with each one of their projects is that prior to the start of construction, they do meetings with emergency first responders to talk about how the project will be managed during construction. And then they also meet with first responders when the project comes on for commercial operations to make sure that everybody is on the same page and understands what protocols would be. Safety is the first word, really, at DTE, literally. All right, the next one is substantially and adversely affect the value of surrounding land. Your planner noted some studies in his report that have found marginal changes in both directions. A few months back, a representative, Coen Resnick, presented to the township its study of actual home sales data, where it found that there were substantial or adverse effects on property values. Instead, values continue to track jurisdictional trends. So just bringing you back to that Coen Resnick study. The next one is site environmental features being compatible with a large-scale solar energy use that's permitted by the overlay district. In both the west and the south areas, soils and topography don't appear to pose siting constraints. Farmland and open space are particularly conducive to solar rate installations because we don't... There isn't any tree removal that's required, there's not any grading that's required. It really can be something that is installed with minimal impact to the land. There are also particularly in the west area, limited wetlands and woodlands that need to be worked around and which will be worked around. The next consideration is compliance with all the requirements of the overlay district. The site development requirements of the overlay district will be met or exceeded based on exclusion areas and if the trigger ordinance is adopted. And then I think your planner confirmed that all of the parcels that are presently conform to all of the requirements of your AR district, so we don't have any nonconforming properties that are included in this application. Site can be put to reasonable economic use as zoned. Farming and agricultural uses are not likely long-term land uses due to population growth and residential development pressure. That's what we've heard from the landowners who have agreed to partner with DTE in this effort, is that they are feeling the pressure to do something with their land, potentially put it into subdivisions if they can't find another productive use because of the economics around farming presently. Interest in residential development is likely to lead to land being converted permanently from farming or agriculture or open space uses if solar's not an option for these landowners. Solar energy provides a reasonable economic alternative to farmland conservation, to the suburbanized residential development, and that's what we are hearing from our landowners, is they perceive this as an ability, as a path, to being able to keep their land in their family for another generation if this project is allowed to proceed. The next one is that the overlay district is generally compatible with the master plan, and I believe that your planning consultant reached that conclusion based on some consistency with the goal of encouraging the continuation of farming and the long-term protection of farmland resources. And that's one of the things this project offers, is a path for longer-term protection of agricultural and farmland, because when this project is done doing its job, it's going to be fully decommissioned and the land restored. Unlike residential development, a solar project can be decommissioned and the land restored. Once property is developed for residential purposes, you rarely see it being reclaimed for other uses. The next one is that the overlay district, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, is general purpose. Again, something that I think your planning consultant and I were on the same page about is that one of the purposes of the zoning ordinance is to meet the state's needs for energy and to facilitate adequate and efficient provision of energy, and that's what we are looking at tonight. is, you know, try to help meet that need. Another purpose of the zoning ordinance is to conserve natural resources, regulate land use in accordance with the land's character and adaptability. And again, I think that's what we are trying to do tonight through the solar exclusion areas that really focus on how to minimize impact. Precedent and possible effects of precedent resulting for approval or denial of the overlay request. In my view, approval would demonstrate the township's contribution to meeting demonstrated needs and grounds for the township to contend that it's done its fair share. The next one is geographic limits of the overlay request. I think this really was posed as a question by your planner. The geographic limits of the overlay district as it was articulated in the zoning ordinance didn't, in argue, fully factor in the buildability of the land and the limitations that exist within that original 900 acres. So, you know, we don't dispute that 900 acres may be sufficient for a utility-scale project, but the acreage must be basically billable free from sighting constraints. And it was those sighting constraints that caused us to look at the western area, which is an area where DTE has existing easements, and then to look at a way of framing a project that tries really hard to minimize impacts within that area through the solar exclusion areas and the depth of those solar exclusion areas and the sound limits that we'd be self-imposing. As with all rezoning decisions, the plan on which the decision is based is generally viewed as a flexible guide that the planning commission makes a final recommendation on when they're presented with a case that presents them with facts. In closing, something I just want to touch upon, we've heard at the last meeting, other meetings, this meeting, you know, maybe the board, planning commission and the board should just wait, and they should wait out until the Act 233 litigation is resolved. There is, I think, a misunderstanding out there about what is the nature of the Act 233 litigation. It is not an attempt to overturn Act 233. It is an appeal that seeks review of whether the MPSC followed proper procedures when it adopted its implementing guidelines. And it raises important questions about how the MPSC has construed some of the provisions of Act 233. But it does not attempt to overturn state citing. It is an appeal of certain actions that the state has taken within state citing. And I just wanted to, you know, end. I'm going to turn it over to Teresa for her to make a few final remarks. But, you know, we've been working with IASCO and other townships to permit projects locally to just really obviate the need to pursue a state citing certificate. I think Mike and I might be on a different page about whether workable ordinances are a thing, but DTE believes that workable ordinances are a thing and that we are willing to work with townships that have workable ordinances and go through a permitting process on that basis without necessarily, you know, invoking the threat of state citing. We really want to work with the township to come up with a project that works. So I'm going to now turn it to Teresa unless anyone has a final question for me.
Just, Mike, I wanted to ask if you're, do you agree with how Emily summarized the litigation of Act 233?
What litigation?
I just would like to know your thoughts. I think maybe the audience would too. Oftentimes, we hear from Emily, and they're like, well, Mike Homier, and you're here.
So October 10th of last year, the MPSC opened its, well, prior to that, opened its own contested case and then issued an order on October 10th. Our clients, along with multiple others, disagreed with what they did and how they did it. Emily's right that the appeal is focused on the MPSC's order because they construed, we believe, Act 233 in a way that was never attended by the legislature and redefined terms that they have no authority to do. That's the nature of the lawsuit. There are two bills that passed out of the House and would repeal 233. Those may or may not be taken out by the Senate. It's hard for me to know at this point. So on the litigation side, the Court of Appeals missed the case call for June. So the earliest it would be, would be early July. Those cases are set from July 1st through July 17th, and then August 1st through August 17th, and so on. So the earliest that case would go to oral argument would be July, and then, you know, you're sort of at that court's discretion in terms of when they issue the opinion, so I can't tell you. I mean, there, right now, last I checked, there are 40 lawyers involved, interest, public interest, special interest from all corners.
But it says here, this one line, it says, "Act 233 litigation does not seek to overturn state citing." So, does it?
No, so the act itself is being dealt with on legislative bills. This appeal has to do with the MPSC's order and how they construe the legislation. Okay, so in some ways, it may have an impact on how 233 is applied, but it would not overturn the adoption of Act 233. The other bills that pass out of committee are intended to do that.
Right, I'm going to turn it over, and let's just another question.
I got hands up in the audience. I'm going to do that gentleman and that gentleman, that's it, because we, it's already going on 9 o'clock. I'm a night owl, I mean, but.
You said that the solar grid will help.
Can you hear yourself speak up, please?
You said that this, once they put the solar grid in, it will make, it will help the residents here by making more reliable electricity, making better power. Are you replacing all the power lines and transformers? Because to get to our house, it doesn't matter what the solar's generating. If you can't get it to our homes reliably, we're still out.
Michael, do you want to talk briefly about DTE's efforts to improve its distribution system that goes to questions of reliability?
So this project specifically will work to just make the grid more reliable in terms of having generation from multiple sources. So that's what was stated earlier. You're right, poles and wires in your local distribution area is going to drive a lot of that reliability to your house. So this is one facet of creating more reliable grid. There are additional facets that will be resolved as well. So this does not, it's not a one, one project solves everything.
I realize that, her statement was, "It's going to make it more reliable for the people of the township." Doesn't sound like it.
It's a piece of it. You need every piece of the puzzle to come together for the life.
So what we've experienced, and now it's no longer the recent past, the great blackout, right? When the grid got overwhelmed and the power went down for days. And projects like this will help keep the grid from being overwhelmed by demand and prevent those large-scale brownouts and blackouts that impact everybody. DTE is constantly making investments into its distribution system. It's a very large distribution system, so I think all of us can kind of go, it's not coming to us fast enough. But I do know that they are working on improving the reliability of the local distribution systems at the same time, because it doesn't make sense to improve the grid if you're not also improving how it's getting to customers.
Your question, and then we're going to.
Okay, so how many people from DTE are represented here today?
Michael Ribbit is a DTE employee. Ellie Simon is a DTE employee.
I just want to know the number of DTE people that are here.
We have another one in the audience, right there.
Okay, so my question would be that there was an expert that was proposed to the panel to either refute or concur with what DTE has to say. I was wondering why that expert wasn't allowed to come to the session.
Are you talking about Catherine Albright?
Yes.
Okay, I researched her, and I got that notice, like it was Friday or Thursday? Thursday, well, I got an email, and I already have, it's just, it's already 9 o'clock. And I don't know what makes her an expert. She's welcome to come and speak. She's about consumer privacy advocacy and radio ID frequency tags. And she's wrote a children's book too, about I Won't Take the Market Beast. So I don't know how she becomes an expert on solar, but I'd be welcome to hear her.
I had a second part of my question really quick. Why, why don't we have a special session when there's a lot more concern with the public here, us being the public, to have an expert to refute or concur? A lot of this is Chinese to me, what you said today already, okay? I'm sorry, it has to be broken down like an eight-year-old, so I do understand it. To have an expert on our side to be able to either to refute or concur with what DTE is here, so they have four or five people here, for one to be standing on our side to be able to speak to it without you, and I understand, I understand we have somebody here, but I don't hear a lot of, you know, dialogue back and forth. I would like to be home with my nine kids to eat, but I'm here, so I understand better. That's all I was trying to say, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Obviously, you all know me here. I don't know if everybody in the audience knows me. Teresa Hannis, I'm the DTE site manager. I've been working.
Please, could you guys please keep it down so we can hear? Thank you.
I started coming to meetings here in the fall of 2022, and in January 2023 was when there were, was, there were people that came to the meeting, both residents of this township and residents of neighboring townships, that came to the meetings to talk to, to talk to the planning commission and the board about modifying their current solar ordinance. So at the end of the day, we've been working with the township and have been to these meetings over the last two and a half years. I already touched on the participation agreement component because I think there were some questions recently about why, why somebody with a not DTE email address was meeting with people about participation agreements. I think we addressed that, so I will not, will not laugh over that.
Why was that, that this T J can feel that way?
You know, can you hold that question to the public, please? Thank you.
So anyway, just to touch on something, and I understand that there are people in this room that do not want solar to come into this community, and the only way that people, some people in this room will be happy until we go away. We are trying to really work towards a balanced project in this community. And I feel bad if at that meeting in August, because I'm familiar, I have not watched the YouTube video, but I feel bad if any way, shape, or form, I or Emily, and I'm sure she feels that way too, offended or spoke out of turn with Julie or any of the board members, because that has not been our intent. When, when the township, and I'm going to address this because it gets talked about. So when the planning commission met, not in public, to write the ordinance, it came up with a 900, or a small group with Mike Homier and a small group of people, there was a 900-plus or minus overlay district that was approved. And when that came to a public hearing, during that public hearing, it was reduced, in the middle of that public hearing, it was reduced to 300 acres. And, and it was voted on at 300 acres. And then it was sent to the board, and the board looked at it and said, why was it, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but I was at that meeting, and the board looked at it and said, "Maybe we need to send this back to the planning commission to better understand why it went from 900 acres to 300 acres." And then it went back to the planning commission, where then, the planning commission then decided to go ahead and move forward with the 900-acre overlay district. During those planning commission meetings that Julie would not have been in attendance at, we had shared that that 900-acre overlay district would not work for us based on the current ordinance, based on the ordinance language, that that 900 acres would not work for us. Julie was not here for those meetings. She would not necessarily have heard that. But that was comments, because I even said during public comment at the planning commission meeting that, that reducing it to 300 acres really wasn't, wasn't, that really wasn't going to be an issue for us because even the 900 acres was not going to work for us. And that was my comment during public comment at that time. So when the board then voted back, when it went back from the planning commission back to the board, the board, over the summer, I don't remember which month, but the board then voted on that ordinance with the 900 acres in it. At that same meeting, I think it was that same meeting, that is when the township supervisor made a motion to have a small working session, put a small working group together to talk about if there would be any other parts of the township that might be able to be considered for additional, for an additional overlay district. They did not commit to that. They just put together a small working group, which Emily and I were part of. During that session is where we came up with this west side. Can you do we put them at that, please? That is where we came up with the west side. And there were questions during this small group session like, "What's going to happen if we don't use any of this land?" And we answered those questions. And one of the answers to that is we could release all that land. Let's say we could have figured out a way to make the 900 acres work. What would we do with the rest of the land? And at the end of the day, we would release it. And some of the conversation that took place at that point was, "Well, if you released it, could another developer come and sign it up? And then they could build a project?" And the answer to that is yes, another developer could. So in those discussions, it was discussed as to what could we make work? What could we add to the land to make the project work from an LCOE standpoint, to make it work from a cost perspective? This project originally had over 2,000, 2,500, maybe close to 3,000 acres signed overall. We were looking at originally about a 200-megawatt project. Another developer might come in and do a 200-megawatt project here. But what we looked at is we decided that by looking at that west, by using the Vermont property, that overlay, and then looking at what over there, because we had all that land signed, we have land signed to the north of the west area. We have land signed, so we have land signed north of Coon Lake Road. We have land signed south of, is that Roberts or Gregory? What's the one that runs east and west?
It's Roberts.
Roberts, we have land signed south of that. And we also have additional land signed to the west of that project. What we talked about in the small group meetings was if we agreed not to develop those areas, and we could come up with an area that could be tucked in, which is that now 227 acres of developmental area, if we could figure out a way to tuck that in and do screening around that, then maybe that could be the best of both worlds. Not the best for anybody here who is really hoping that we go away, but the best for the township overall in terms of getting a one-and-done project, right? And hiding it, tucking it in. And that is when we talked through doing this conditional rezoning. So there was a lot of discussion, and I know not everybody hears it at all these meetings. And I understand this is my day job, and it's not yours. And you're taking time away from your family, and I completely respect that. At the end of the day, though, we are looking at how do we meet the needs of the community? And if you look at our 720 acres of solar panels, it's still less than the 900 acres that were, that are proposed in the original ordinance that was written. 720 acres of solar panels is less than 900. So I know there's thoughts about the fact that we've got 1,800 acres of solar panels. That's not really the case. The other thing that I want to mention is we have not gone and talked to over 1,600 residents in this township. We've educated a lot of people in this community. I'm not about to stand here and say that, that some of them would say, "We don't want it here at all." When proposed with the question, "Would you rather us stay local where you have, where the township has control, or go to state citing where they have less control?" The answer is, "We'd rather figure out a way to make it work." And I've met with landowners last week, and I will give you their names and phone numbers, who said they won't come to a meeting to speak in support, but they would rather you vote yes on our overlay because you're, you know what you're getting versus for state citing. The last thing that I'm going to add is that, one of the individuals talked about here, if we can make this project work by staying local and give everything that we've talked about here today, why can't we do that if we have to go to the MPSC? There's a myriad of reasons for that. But at the end of the day, staying local is, I might be speaking out of turn here, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but it is more cost-effective for us to stay local than for us to go to the MPSC, which gives us more dollars to spend on landscape screening. which gives us more dollars to spend on landscape screening. I can also tell you that even if we end up having to go to the MPSC, I can pretty much, probably shouldn't say this, but I can pretty much think that we are not going to do 55 at a sound limit at a dwelling. If we end up having to go to the MPSC, we're, we're going to do what we can, but the project is going to look bigger. The project is going to use the space that we have excluded right now, because financially, that does make sense for us to use that area that we're excluding currently. And so we would likely put panels in that area that we have excluded. So I understand that people in this room want you to vote no. What I want to say is that by voting yes on both overlays, you are still under the 900 acres that you originally put in an ordinance that you thought would be able to work for DTE. We are still less than what you guys had proposed in that ordinance that you wrote. We're also able to give you, we, we committed to setbacks greater than required, lower sound thresholds, and enhanced screening for viewshed protection. And a vote, and a yes vote on tonight's rezoning request would do this. It would keep the decision-making local, which is what everybody wants. Nobody wants us to go to the MPSC. It would allow neighbors, the pink dots on the maps up there, to collaborate on screening plans. It would ensure additional setbacks prior design and reduce visual impact for roads. And like I said, this also allows us to build a project with an additional 270 acres, so that is not released for somebody else. Don't know what's going to happen with state siding. Nobody has a crystal law. But at the end of the day, if we don't build there, then we wouldn't release those agreements. We, we could release those agreements, and it could be another developer, or we would have to move forward with state siding in that way. So we believe this works, that this provides a balanced area. But it also, it works for us. It works for us, but it also works for those that live around the project. Because at the last public hearing, there were 40. At the last public hearing, there were 44 people who commented. Of that 17, there were 17 people that commented that lived in the, that lived within the 1,700 foot, or the 300 foot area. Of those 17, there was actually three or four people that actually said, but if we have to have our projects, and they said to the planning commission, hold them accountable to better setbacks and better sound limits, we don't want to hear it, we don't want to see it. We're proposing something that says, you won't hear it, and you won't see it.
Thank you. Okay.
I got to get going, but can I say one thing?
I'm going to do a call to the public.
I just got a quick question for them. Give me five minutes. Michael, I live, I live right across the street. Large piece of land across the street, it's all around me. If they agree on the setbacks, is that 100% agreeable? That they won't come back to you in five years and say, hey, we decided to fill the panels with the setbacks? I've asked this question before. Would you be willing, if they vote, that you'll sign, you will never come back to them, to build anything on the setbacks? Is that something that is 100% guaranteed?
So what we have explained at past meetings is that by going down the conditional rezoning path, we can't change anything without the planning commission and the.
Wait, wait.
Stop, let me finish.
Ma'am, don't tell me to stop. I've been listening two years.
Let me finish. That we cannot change it without the planning commission and the township board agreeing. That is pretty darn locked up.
I understand. Would you be willing to let the township know, Anne Michael, you guarantee you will never come back to them to build anything on the setbacks? Yes or no?
So I'm going to answer that by saying.
Yes or no, ma'am? I'm a simple man. I'm a little man. Yes or no?
I'm going to, please allow me to finish. I'm going to answer that by saying, I can't guarantee the future. Your future is controlled by the planning commission and the township board. And if we ever came back, basically.
So basically, you will be coming back for setbacks.
No, I have not said that.
I guarantee if that's the case, go to state.
I have said that we have committed to these conditions. And once those conditions go into place, they are locked into place by legislative action of the township board. And they can't be changed without the township board agreeing to change it. You can't force it.
So if the board, if the board wrote that in with Michael's up at state, we will never allow you to build anything on them setbacks. Would you be geared, would you, would you agree to that?
The reason I'm not agreeing to that is I don't think it's legally enforceable. So I'm not going to suggest that we.
There it is. There's the writing on the wall.
No, but I, please allow me to finish. I don't think that I, as an individual, can commit DTE to never making another zoning application in this township. I, I, I just don't think it's legally enforceable. And so I'm not going to offer it up as some sort of fair face.
I know you've been working hard at this for three years. I've been working hard for almost 45 years to afford my 250 acres there. You are coming in and going to ruin my life, my wife, my grandkids, my future. And don't play me down. I'm a little man, and I need the board. It's about time we protect the little man. Because that's big business. They're going to roll all over you. And it's not right, ma'am. You're coming into a community with good people. I know this whole township. And I don't blame the landlord. You big business make me sick. And I hope all you guys do the right thing and say no, because they're not willing to say no to coming back to do the setbacks. Read the writing on the wall. The setbacks ain't going to stay setbacks. For example, I had DTE try to sign me up. And you know what? I didn't sign. They couldn't guarantee me. They were going to keep my property and pay me for 30 years. You know what they told me? We don't know if we're going to be here five years, 10 years, but we want the right to pull out.
So if you could provide me with the name of who you talked to.
Oh, no. I'm just telling everybody right now, there's no way that you guaranteed the landlord's a 30-year contract.
We don't want to get into that.
I just want, I thought it's 10 after 9:00.
Well, but this is important. It's 10 after 9:00, and I'm losing sleep too. And I, my whole life is wrapped up in my property. Just protect me.
I'm controlling the meeting now. That's my job. Michael, do you have any comments on that gentleman's concerns?
Well, like, like anything, whether it's conditional rezoning or approval of a special use permit with conditions attached to it, the township always has the ability to revisit those with the consent and approval of the other party, right? So it's, it's like a contractual relationship. They can't be changed unilaterally. So it's not as if DTE can come back and say, well, we're going to ignore what we said were going to be the conditions of the approval. That they could not do. That's actionable. You could sue them over that violation of that plan. Probably would undo the condition, so it revert to its former use. And then you have the whole issue with special use permit, the revocation. That's why that's important. But unilaterally, it cannot happen.
Silence. Thank you. Okay. Now we will do the call of the public, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And I'm going to go with that gentleman back there, because he has a handout.
Okay, so little rule change. From now on, everybody gets six minutes at call of the public, because we always have to share our minutes. That seems reasonable to me. And the second thing is if we're going to slather this land up with solar panels, we need to do it like crazy. Fill it end to end. Because if we're going to waste it, we need to waste big. So that's where I'm at. So enjoy your six minutes, people. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. It's three minutes.
No, it'll be six. Don't think we bring a lawyer in here now.
Oh, I promise you, it's three minutes.
No, it'll be six.
Okay. Anybody else who wants to speak to the call of the public? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Lori.
Annie. Hi, Lori.
Hi. I also would be represented as map dot 11. And I'm your little man. And I can assure you that you haven't come and talked to me. So when you're speaking in turn about people that are within 300 feet, I assure you, we haven't spoken to everybody. And I don't appreciate being said that what I want or what you think that we want. So please look at your comments to specifically the people you have spoken to. I can also say that the hashtags, I believe what you're calling on is the, the speed area zones, that you're not putting solar panels. I'm sure you're putting stuff there. Obviously, that's the connecting through. And what all those hash marks are is trees. So I'm assuming there's going to be some impact to the, to the areas that you're protecting by not putting solar panels there. So just wanted to speak towards that. Your decision, like, obviously, you guys have to make the best decision based on the information that you're taking in from everybody. But I would highly recommend that you take the time and give it the respect that it deserves to make sure you are completely clear with all the legalities and the little nuances of verbiage that maybe is a disparity between what they're saying and what Mr. Homier is saying. To make sure, before you approve anything moving forward, that we're good. Second of all, I would speak towards the fact that they are citing the advantages, like protecting farmland specifically. But if they can't provide you the environmental impact on what those solar panels do, I don't really see how they can consider that to be a pro for their, like, provide their documentation for that to be your consideration.
Are you done?
Oh, okay. Good. Then I would also like to address the fact that the gentleman representing DTE spoke during the call of the public. And the call of the public are limited, three minutes, but they're entitled a whole wide range.
Over an hour and a half.
Right, as much time as you want to plead their case. So it feels to me out of balance, the representation the township is getting and the latitude they're getting here to present their case. And it feels very heavy-weighted to DTE being able to run the meeting and take their liberties.
Thank you for your comments.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have? Go ahead, Lori.
I'm going to go with Cody. And she can have my time if she needs it. I might.
If she gets six minutes.
I can have my time. Do you need more than six minutes?
Not yet. Covered. So Debbie Knox, I'm a resident here in my Asko Township. Couple of things that I do want to address. I think we should be careful about labeling things as everybody and nobody. There's no absolutes in this at all. So I think we should be careful of the words we use on that. In terms of when you bring large-scale solar energy into any community, what can often follow that is battery storage. I don't know where that's at right now. I don't know if that's been addressed. I don't know if that's a ghost waiting in the shadows for this township. We've talked about how the lines around here cannot sustain the power that we have right now. What happens if we do harness whatever energy can come from solar? This comes through. And next thing you know, knocking on our door is battery storage. Something we need to get ahead of before we can't get ahead of it. And we're waiting on it. This township, and I know Julie's mentioned this before, cannot handle fire hazards such as a battery storage facility. In terms of the, somebody had mentioned earlier too, about a vote to the public. Just a reminder that if this is voted on, this can go to a referendum, which is then a vote of the public. So you still have that as an option on that, no matter what votes you do on this, either way, really. One of the things from the DTE representative, and I do want to ask a question, which I would hope maybe there's an answer. I understand that there are confidential agreements, and I appreciate that. But you did mention that there was about a 10 to 15% spread in terms of what landowners get. What is the average? And I don't think that would give anyone any type of secret sauce away on this, but what is the average amount per acre that at least gets in the state of Michigan from DTE for this? From a range, from a range.
I'm going to allow them to answer, and I want to make sure that you're okay with it, and everyone in the public's okay with it, and I don't feel that they're being given extra time. Okay, go ahead and answer.
We do not share ladies on them.
That is great. Thank you for the transparency. I appreciate that. Additionally, on top of that, just that 720 buildable acres of what they're speaking to, what that really equals is 1.125 square miles. So think about that as well. You know, this really isn't, it's clear, I am not for this. I'm going to make that very clear. It is also not in my backyard right now. However, I don't think this is so much about solar or no solar. This is the issue of trust. Trust involving a multi-billion dollar public utility company that seemingly comes in here, and I'm not casting any stones at any individuals, just it's the vibe of really taking advantage of a small rural community, maybe some people that need money, at the behest of everybody else within the community. So we're all here, it's people's rights to go ahead and sign the lease, but we're all here because of that. And the veiled threats, that doesn't help the case. If you want to build trust within a community, the veiled threats do not help. So to keep in mind, once the door is opened, what else will come through? I am very concerned about anything else that once that door is open, especially in terms of battery storage or anything else that may come through that we don't have line of sight on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Go ahead, Annie.
I pulled it up. The numbers. It's like a huge range though. Thank you.
I was a bit concerned, maybe offended, that we were guilted into producing our share. That was a statement that was made. Our Asko Township, we came up with the overlay district that was on the southwest, southeast side. That was what we considered our share at that time. However, our share now has expanded across to the west side. But even, even back, you know, three years ago, like it was stated, the leased space was 2,500 acres. It was all around the Coon Lake Bull Run intersection. It was huge. And so if, if we had not, if the public had not come here and started coming involved, we would have, we would have that massive piece involved too. So it just keeps spreading. I think we did our due diligence by setting up an overlay district that's on the Burma Farms. There are smaller projects that have been built by DTE. I just know that, you know, the goal is larger projects. And I would hope that we stay with what we originally planned and stay on that 900 acres. And we were generous at the piece that we gave. And that's where we should stay, in my opinion. No more than that. What we set up was, was fair. And that was, that's my opinion. And I don't think we should entertain the west side at all. And then the other thing is, is I don't know if, if DTE is being pressured to buy from Ranger Power. So that they said that they wouldn't build, but that doesn't mean that they still, the Ranger Power piece that's on the north side is still not in play, and that they would have to still buy that utility. So it gets back to where, where do we draw the line? Is it now, or is it later? Do we give away too much now? We have the overlay district. I think that the litigation that's involved allows us to honor our overlay district that's on the east side. If I'm right, Mike? Yeah, that litigation doesn't, it allows us to honor the overlay district that we originally set.
Well, the court's going to determine what the scope is.
Exactly.
I don't want to get out in front of them.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Mike.
Mike Brown.
Yes.
Yeah, you had your hand up. Did you say something?
I'd like to ask a question to one of the DTE reps, if I could, and then possibly say a little, give some information, I'll say.
Do you guys have any questions?
It's for Mike.
Go ahead.
This one's for Michael. And he was talking earlier about the coal plants. And basically saying they're old, they're not efficient anymore. So do you know what the efficiency of those are at this point, when they're that old and, and, you know, still running at this point? Like, what is the efficiency of a coal plant nowadays? It's from the 1970s.
Go ahead.
When you say efficiency, how would you like to define?
Well, I guess percentage.
Power output.
Of output, that it was originally capable of doing and may now be doing.
Sure. So, so there's, I'd say there's two, two ways to look at it. One way is you have capacity factor, and that's the ability to provide power. So right now, you know, when they were built, they were probably closer to high 80s, low 90%. Where when they're not providing power, that's typically where you're taking them out of, you know, for outer duties, things like that, you know, boiler maintenance. The cost effectiveness and the actual cost to keep them up, there's a variable cost associated with it. And right now, the whole market is run by MISO. Maybe not as an independent system operator. It kind of works. system operator, and it kind of works almost like a stock market, where everyone bids in what their variable cost is, and MISO, based on the load they see, they buy power. And so we actually sell power into MISO, purchase it back for our customers as well, and right now, coal plants are more expensive to operate from a levelized cost-to-energy basis, which is how you're bidding in and out of variable. So when you're talking capacity factor, do they have the ability to operate at a higher capacity factor than solar per se? Yes. The cost to operate in that, to give the same amount of electrons as solar, is going to be higher.
Before or after subsidies?
Hang on.
Sorry, sorry.
This is my time.
Stop joking.
Thank you for that. You're welcome. Okay, now with that being said, I'd like to read something. The Energy Information Administration, EIA, is an independent agency of the U.S. Department of Energy. They evaluate the amount of subsidies that the federal government provides energy producers for the fiscal years from 2016 to 22. It is reported federal financing interventions and subsidies in, in energy. So I'm going to cut to the chase, from 2016 to 2022, 85% of subsidies has been given to renewable energy, which totals, according to Goldman Sachs, if you put it all together, 1.2 trillion dollars for renewable energy. But yet, renewable energy only produces 5.5% of our energy. So when you start talking about costs, I believe that the cost and the ratio that he is talking about is because of the amount of subsidies that solar is given, and I also have another data where gas was $2.03 a kilowatt, and solar's 139.87 cents for the same kilowatt in subsidies. So I believe that that factor is huge, and when they start talking about the cost of energy, and what is cheapest for us as consumers, because we are paying that bill, the subsidies come from our tax dollars. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Greg? I'm sorry. During his presentation for DTE, I just had one question for him. Can you help me, because you seem to be a subject matter expert at, at the energy, can you help me with your pre-DTE experience? Can you help me with that? Does that background?
Go ahead. I don't know, what do you mean by pre-DTE? Like, what he did before?
Pre-DTE, yeah, what was his background prior to DTE? Because I'm, you're well versed in energy, I'm just wondering, were you working for, like, one of the energy companies, or were you working for somebody else? Do you, do you know who you were working for?
I'm very interested.
It's up to you. Do you know?
I'll speak to you, I have a bachelor in science and a mechanical engineer.
Yeah, I'm talking about professional experience, not your educational experience. Where did you work prior to DTE? I don't think that's wrong.
If he doesn't feel comfortable answering it, Greg, I don't think he has to answer that.
Okay. Just so everyone knows.
I mean, what did you do before you do that?
I can tell you, my, no, I'm just saying this, I think it's relevant to this question, because if you looked at his LinkedIn ID, I think you'd see what his background was.
Anything else pertinent to this public hearing, and not people's personal?
Go ahead, Kim.
Tammy, you all worked really, really, really hard on an ordinance and an overlay that fit our township, and what fit the culture, and our master plan, and the best we could do, which none of us were, I'm not going to say none, thank you, none of us, thank you, for reminding, many of us objected to the size of it at that time, but you, as a board, decided that that was the best thing we could do to balance that equation, to meet the needs of the state requirement that we allow this, and the community's needs to not have this disruption in our community. You came up with an overlay district. DTE walked in here, knowing that, and said, nope, we want a new overlay, and we want more land, we want it bigger. And I do believe that by making an overlay bigger, it is precedent setting, and that people could come in later and ask for a new overlay. I think that is precedent setting.
Thank you for your comment. All right, I think at this time, I'm going to, does the advocate have any final comments? No. We're going to adjourn this public hearing at 9:30.